Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 2014th, sorry, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. We are here this evening to open our session, to go into executive session, to vote on some executive session minutes. We will then reconvene here at 7:00 PM for our regularly scheduled meeting. And we are broadcast live right now and recorded by cable TV, and they will be back with us at 7:00 as well. So with that, can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion to enter into executive session to approve and possibly release executive session meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, and we do need to do a roll call?
Mark, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Seth, yes.
All right, and Steph has entered in. She will not do roll call, but we're just, or you want to sit down and do roll call? We're entering into executive session for the minutes.
Sure.
If you can just give us your roll call.
Okay. Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you back here at 7:00 PM. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome back to our February 14th meeting. We've just come out of executive session, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jay, if you can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Anyone here for citizens input, or everyone here for an agenda item later? Okay, anything come in in the mailbox? Christina? No, nothing. All right, so we'll start first with Mr. Yukna. If you can come up here, we're going to review and vote on the second statement of interest for the Taylor School to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you. As we did last year, it's the exact same motion, but basically it's to do a renovation slash expansion of the, of the Taylor School. As you know, the Taylor School is coming up on 60 years old. Many issues that can't be addressed individually. We've done things like roofs and boilers that, you know, kept the building in good shape, but, you know, as far as major security, you know, window concerns, which are the originals and stuff like that. Once you start opening that door, you really are into a much larger project, and you really click off a lot of things around fire protection and everything else. So, you know, we came to last year with the request that, you know, that we put this out there. At the time, I really felt that, you know, this was similar to the borough, be a two to three-year process. We almost got in last year, which amazed us. But we were, I mean, because we were so close, and we went through the senior study with the MSBA, my opinion is if they have the funding this coming year, that the Taylor has a very good shot of being in the list for this coming year. It requires two votes, a vote by the school committee, which has already happened, it's the exact same vote that you are being requested to vote, and then the vote by the Board of Selectmen, which just basically says that we can start the process of moving forward. It doesn't commit the town, because obviously we don't know what the MSBA is going to come up with, we don't know what the project scope is going to end up being cost-wise. So until we get down the road further, there's not a full commitment, but this is just that we're all in sync and understand that, you know, what we're doing here, that the school committee isn't off doing its own thing, and the Board of Selectmen doesn't know about it, type of thing, so.
All right. We do have a letter in our packet as well that kind of outlines some of the things that you talked about, and would be our support if we approve it. Any questions from the board on this one?
No, it's a good write-up.
I went to the school, and my kids said to him, "When you go there," it hasn't changed. It really needs it. All right, so I think we're ready for a, it's a rather lengthy motion that we have, so bear with us.
Okay. Motion to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form to be submitted by April 14th, 2023, for the Taylor Elementary School located at 196 South Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future to include the replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilating systems, the increased energy conservation and decreased energy-related costs in a school facility, and replacement of or addition to obsolete building in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form to Massachusetts School Building Authority, in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that?
No.
All right. All those in favor? All right. All right, thank you. All right, and our next item is a public hearing. We are about five minutes early, so I'm just going to run through some action items and kind of get those out of the way. All right, so why don't we go through the action items? We could probably get through all five of those real quick in five minutes. Sorry, six of them.
Start with the Normandy Farms.
Yes, please.
Just go right to the motion. Motion to approve four one-day beer and wine licenses for Normandy Farms Campground from 12:00 to 4:00 PM on April 15th, June 3rd, and 24th, and September 30th, 2023.
Second.
And just under discussion, do we need to fix that motion? Because they are saying that the alcohol is arriving the day before the event, which would make it a two-day for each one.
Katie on the line?
Yeah.
I think it would, I think it would be, actually.
Yeah, it's handwritten on each.
Yeah, we can't hear you just yet.
Katie, you want?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, now we can.
Yep.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, so if you could just say a two, two-day license, because they did pay $100 per event to cover them for the alcohol being there the day before.
All right, so.
Four, two-day.
Yeah, so four, two-day, being April 14th and 15th, June 2nd and 3rd, June 23rd and 24th, and September 29th and 30th. Okay.
Second.
All right, great. So no further discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just, there's been, they've had licenses in the past and no issues, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's kind of, kind of what I've been doing is, if someone's come in before, they've come in front of us, they haven't had any issues, we've heard their process, you know, those we're taking as action items, so no, no issues.
Great. Almost at them.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the use of public way, public way application to close East Street for the CrossFit Tour, CrossFit Road Race on Sunday, June 25th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
And this one came up last time, too. Sorry, I didn't notice this in the motion, but the street is not called East Street in Foxborough. That's the name of the street, right? In Rentham. Katie, remember, we talked about this last time, too?
Let me, and Christina had asked me about that today. That was my mistake. It is, I believe it's Main Street Extension.
Yeah, I think it is, too, if I remember right, as well. So just under further discussion, too, this is one that has been in front of us before. The route has not changed. Same thing with the next one, so that's why you'll see some of the public ways. We're kind of going through the ones that are new, you know, like Patrick and Amy, that's why we're discussing those, because those ones are new, so. All right, so the motion's revised to Main Street Extension. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way application to close all of or portions of Bird Street, School Street, around the Common, and South Street to booth baseball field for Foxborough Youth Baseball and Softball, opening day parade on April 15th from 10:00 to 11:00 AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way application to close all or portions of Pace and Road, Chestnut Street, Mechanic Street, Railroad Ave, Bird Street, and Baker Street for Bailey's Team for Autism Run for Autism 5K on April 16th from 8:30 to 11:00 AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a 380 donation from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors for Tai Chi classes, for Tai Chi classes at the Senior Center.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from January 31st, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry, forgot, any discussion? All right. All right, and then the last one, the, you've all been hearing about how the Southeastern Regional School District needs a representative. We were trying hard to find someone. Now we actually have four or five people who've come forward, so this is a joint appointment by the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. The school committee had asked that we set up a subcommittee so that they can meet with and then make a recommendation to both boards for someone to come forward. They are meeting at 3:45 on Thursday here, and they do need someone from the Board of Selectmen to join that group. It's tough for me during work hours. I don't know if anyone else is available to join that subcommittee?
I'm not.
Anyone else, Steph, or Dennis, or Seth?
They're going to meet.
Thursday, 3:45 to 5:15.
Yeah, it might even be quicker than that, and then there's just one more meeting to just interview the candidates and set up the questions that they want to do, and then that, we discussed front tonight.
Yeah, I'm working, I have to be at work.
You're working, too.
Four o'clock Thursday, this Thursday. I didn't know if anything happened.
Any chance year-round?
What's the date again?
3:45 this coming Thursday.
This Thursday, two days.
Two days. And then you guys can discuss when you meet next, on everyone's schedule.
I could do that.
Okay, really appreciated, Dennis, thank you. Okay, so the motion would be to appoint Dennis to the subcommittee, to find a representative for the Southeastern Regional School District representative.
So, someone else, I could?
So, I'll second.
All right, great. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Christina, will you just let them know tomorrow? Okay, thanks. All right, so we're right on time now for our public hearing. We will open that by reading the public hearing notice. If the group presenting can come to the front of the table.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 138, will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, beginning at 7:10 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of an on-premises annual all-alcohol license for Alston Restaurant Group, Foxborough LLC, doing business as Axel &amp; Byrne BBQ, 267 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass, 02035. Manager of Record, Sean Alston. Additionally, licensee requests approval of a common victula and seven-day entertainment license for established hours of operation. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Second.
All right. So, good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman.
We have 10 minutes set aside for this discussion, so if you can give us a little bit of background, we have your application in front of us. I see you've just provided us with some shots, some floor plans, some menus.
Little bit of the, little bit of the history and the concept, and, you know, a more flushed-out menu than we had previously, and, you know, an updated, not an updated, but a, you know, clearer floor plan, of which there are larger ones in front of you as well, if you, you know, if that would help. My name is Tom Miller from McDermott Quill Team, Miller in Boston, on behalf of the applicant, Sean Alston, and Alston Restaurant, Foxborough, with the proposed DBA of Axel &amp; Byrne. Sean is also the proposed manager of record for this licensee. He has well over 30 years of experience in the restaurant industry, including over here at Patriot Place specifically, in the, the location in which we're moving in, you know, this, this proposal is proposing to renovate and update and rebrand. So he's not only familiar with this industry, but he's also familiar with the unique challenges of operating in Patriot Place. Sean is already approved manager of record at his, one of his existing locations in Somerville, where, that he and his wife currently run, Salt and Stone. He is familiar with the Mass General Laws for the sale and service of alcohol, as well as the ABCC rules and regulations for the same, and the towns' rules. I made sure he was aware of the towns' rules before we came down tonight. And he is actually going through the tip certification process as we speak. This application, as I said, is part of the rebranding of the existing Capriati Sandwich Shop, which he currently owns. Axel &amp; Byrne is, this is a food-driven concept, and one that is uniquely personal to Sean, so I'm going to allow him to, I'm going to, you know, as a lawyer, actually stop talking for a minute, and allow him to explain this concept to you, because it's going to definitely mean more coming from him than me.
Thank you for having me. Nice to see you all. We've had Capriatis for 10 years, and we also opened Five Guys. Five Guys was the second one in Massachusetts. It was very successful at Patriot Place. We thought that we could duplicate that with a sandwich concept, and it really didn't do as well. That's the reason for the rebrand. We had 10 years' deal with Capriatis, so it came to the end of that, and we said, okay, what's next? My wife and I had just rebranded our restaurant in Somerville after COVID to come out of a Neapolitan pizza concept into Salt and Stone, and we, it's done extremely well, family food, so.
What neighborhood is that in?
Pardon me?
What neighborhood is Salt and Stone?
Assembly Row.
Okay.
Assembly Row. So we're like, oh, what are we going to do with Capriatis? Got to do something unique, too. So, excuse me, I get a little emotional sometimes. Axel &amp; Byrne are my grandparents. Axel was a traveling salesperson in New York. He'd come home from the road, tell my grandmother about the food he had. She was the first or second woman to go to Court on Blue in New York. So her last name was Byrne, Axel &amp; Byrne. So that's where it comes from, so.
So, and, you know, as, as I said, this is.
I'll get better.
This is something that is uniquely personal to him, and this is not, you know, this is a concept that is very food-driven, as that story, you know, tells you. So this is a food-focused establishment that will be, its main focus is barbecue, but in addition to that barbecue, there'll be fresh offerings, because as Sean says, you know, not everyone can eat barbecue every day like we can, so, you know, there'll be fresher options, salads, things like that, as well as some sandwiches in the style of some of the New York-style delis as well, to go along, you know, all made in-house, you know, very food-driven, very, very, you know, very strong concept in that regard. Part of that concept is the inclusion of a curated bar to go with it. You know, this, the care with which Sean has crafted the food menu you see before you, he is crafting the cocktail menu to go with it. You know, I say curated bar, because, you know, this is not going to be a large, sit-down bar, like some of the other places existing in, in Patriot Place. This is a counter-service establishment. We are going to offer draft beer, wine, batched draft cocktails, as well as, you know, a curated selection of other alcohol to allow people to, you know, get within reason what they want. We're not going to be, you know, firing up daiquiris and whatnot, but you'll be able to get multiple options for, you know, a full-service bar, a full-service alcohol bar. So in that regard, this, all staff will be tip-strained, not just front of the house, all staff will be tip-strained, and the counterstaff making those sales will also be using scanners to confirm that everyone is of age to purchase alcohol. There'll be floor staff monitoring the area, the seating area, during the time of operation to make sure that everything, you know, is, is clean, neat, and as well as run accordingly. This counter-service model allows the staff to assess each patron as they make their purchase of alcohol, whether it's their first or their second, during their time at the establishment. So there'll be eyes on people as they come in, all the way through the process, until they sit back down. This is also something he is familiar with. Sean mentioned he rebranded the Neapolitan pizza place that was a, you know, high-quality pizza establishment with a counter-service model for the sale of alcohol. So it is something he's familiar with, and knows how to operate successfully, to the point where he is, you know, has successfully operated in Somerville through the last couple of stings, and he was the one who, you know, one of the few who came out without actually being stung, for lack of a better way of putting it. So he is, he knows how to operate these establishments, run them well, and run them the way they're supposed to be run. While this is a counter-service model, it's not a quick-service model, this is, you know, made-in-house, food-driven, quality, quality product, you know, it's not a quick-service, quick turnover. You know, this, like barbecue, it's slow and slow. You know, this is not something that are going to be able to turn over quickly. This, these are good quality products that, that will be served to customers who are going to enjoy a nice meal. So this is going to bring something that Foxborough, specifically Patriot Place, is missing, you know, they don't have an establishment like this, this is going to meet that need, and it's run by a clearly experienced operator. We appreciate the time you guys have taken to listen to this tonight and to review our application. We're happy to answer any ongoing questions you have.
Sure, great. So looking at the application, I do have a couple of quick questions in the board mail also. So you are the manager of record on your other restaurant?
Yes.
So, you know, in town, we, we don't like absentee owners, so we want to make sure you're able to be on premises at that restaurant to maintain the license, and then as well be here, so.
So right now, so my, Salt and Stone, I have a general manager, an AGM, and another bar manager. So I have three full-time managers there. My wife is also full-time.
Okay.
So between the five of us, we're doing it, and as I best explain it to people, I design the restaurants very well, I build them out, I concept them, I hire the staff, I train the staff, and then I kind of step back. I like to surround myself with people that can do the job a lot better than I can possibly do it myself.
Okay.
I think that the GM and the managers should be able to operate them, but they have to do it to our standards. This is given, we've had this, we're coming up on our year anniversary at Salt and Stone. We're up 350% versus the old concept. It's, you know, four and a half, five stars across the board. Please feel free to Google us and see our reputation.
And come by.
And come by for a visit.
But because he's built that staff up there, that allows him to come here and build the staff here, and if he finds himself, you know, being able to step back from, from the establishment here, you know, while, after it gets up and running, after he's identified that staff, we'll see you guys, I'll see you guys again for the new manager of record. But, you know, for this, especially for this build-out and train-up and whatever, he's going to be very hands-on and in-person at the location.
Yeah, that, that would be our expectation, though. When you do step back, you would have, you know, whoever is there day-to-day.
That's correct. That's correct. But I am kind of a workaholic when it comes to opening up my stores.
Especially with the new ones, I'm sure.
Yes.
It's like, it's like a newborn.
Yeah.
Very, very time-consuming.
Any other questions?
Just walk in first, come for a sort of business?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. If you've ever been to Capriatis, it's kind of almost a cattle call.
Yeah.
There's, you come in, you turn left, you walk down the aisle, you're going to see the menus right in front. There's, he spoke of the, the different things we're going to have besides barbecue, and one of them is going to be cured meats, pastramis, et cetera, carved right in front of you. Then the cashier takes your order, and then you kind of move through the line. Sit down, we'll call your name when it's ready, and you come up and get your own cocktail.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I've been serving for 35-plus years myself, and the passion that I can see on your face for this establishment, I, I just love that, because I feel like you are going to be all in here. The barbecue concept, I think it's great, because I feel like every time we travel somewhere, we're looking for a good barbecue place, especially if it's somewhere that's known for barbecue, so I love, I love that concept. My other question was kind of what Leah said, just figuring eventually at some point, if you weren't going to be there at all times. I love it, and I hope, I hope it's a huge success up there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I do get emotional, so.
Yeah. Two more questions. Will you, will you do the grab-and-go for the door zone outside? Like, the people can leave with the drinks, or you're going to?
You have to have food to do that.
Okay, but you will participate?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, we won't hold you to it, but what are you thinking for an approximate season of opening?
We're hoping to be open by the end of March.
Okay, fabulous. Okay, great.
Yeah, there's a lot coming up.
Great, great.
You know, so going through this process and working with Katie to get everything up, if, if you guys see this as a good option for, for the town, you know, we'll, we'll work to get that done as soon as possible, and hopefully the end of March.
Katie's been wonderful, by the way, so.
Great job, Sean.
Thank you.
And you guys did a great job, nice job the other day, too, when you were, we went over the same concept in my office with, with the chief, to make sure that there was no, no unanswered questions, did both, did a great job. One thing you didn't say, which I didn't see on your menu, you have burnt ends. Nobody has burnt ends.
Yes, we have, we're dead.
Good for you. The last time I saw burnt.
The place in flame that has them, and I was like, holy macro.
Yeah.
Have to have burnt ends, they might run out.
Burnt ends, the last time I had them was in Nashville, Tennessee, but they, I'll tell you, they're terrific, so I look, look forward to seeing that, seeing that.
All right, great. It is a public hearing, so anyone here from the public with any comment? No? All right, any further discussion before we close the public hearing? All right?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Motion to approve the all-alcohol on-premise license for Alston Restaurant Group, Foxborough LLC, doing business as Axel &amp; Byrne BBQ, BBQ.
Second.
All right, under further discussion, we would say welcome to town, but you're already here, but this is very exciting, so I think everyone's.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Excited to see this new concept. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, right, right, sorry. We've got your Common Vic and your seven-day.
Motion to approve the Common Victula and Seven-Day Entertainment License for Alston Restaurant Group, Foxborough LLC, doing business as Axel &amp; Byrne BBQ.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might have to field trip a little bit.
Right? We like to, we like to do, come to your grand opening, let us know. We'll promote it, we'll. All right, so up next, we have the J.C.'s with the Use of Public Way application for Central Street. And kind of a new application, kind of an old concept, but we just wanted to have you come here and explain it, since there's kind of a change of timing. So with that, if you don't mind introducing yourself and?
Sure. My name is Amy LaRash, and I'm from the Foxborough J.C.'s.
And I'm Jay Barrows, still state rep.
Okay.
And own Barrows Insurance at 38 Central Street.
So we're here today to hopefully get approval for a June 25th car show. It'll be very similar to last year. Few things that have changed, we will not be using the back veterans lot, so that will be open for parking for the public. We found that that was kind of a, we didn't need it, so we'd like to open it so that people can come and attend. What else? So pretty much everything is going to be the same.
Okay.
So we would like to use Town Hall Parking Lot, close down Central Street from Wall to the center. We will actually this year have a band instead of a DJ, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we learned last year is that there, we have to have a place for the people that are coming to, to park, right? The cars are easy. We had a great array of different models and people, and folks love it. And then to get the young people out, the kids, the grandkids, to come walk around in a safe place, it was well done, where people could, you know, make a right onto Wall Street to get up around the Common, or get to Mechanic Street, so that was easy, And then make a left on the Liberty and get out onto South Street. And quite frankly, I think it's a little safer doing that way than ripping around the Common, quite frankly. So we hope to be able to, you know, bring more cars. We've been blessed that we have the New England Cruisers that meet at Patriot Place once every couple of weeks during the summer. That's on a Thursday night. This is on the weekend, and we've got an audience there, and Amy has worked really hard with the rest of the J.C.'s, you know, promoting it. And hopefully, we can get this on the map and get it on the calendar to promote. And the businesses from the Uptown Collaborative that we have monthly, and Leah, we appreciate your participation with that. But the businesses are excited to do it, because what they get out of it is, again, people eyeballs on their business. We're not, I'm not selling any insurance that day, right? I know that. But if people know that I'm there, maybe when the spirit moves them, they'll come back. And that's the same with the bakery, with the barber shop, with, you know, the sub shop, with all of us, Cindy's Jewelry. So that's, that's why we do it, and that exposure is, it's really a lift for us, so.
All right, great. And I thought that there was a change from fall to June, but are we back here? Was it June already last year? That was kind of why we wanted to talk about it.
So last year, we had it in July.
Okay.
We changed it to the end of June just because of timing with other events. I did make mention that we possibly wanted to do one in October as sort of like a trunk-or-treat. But I wasn't sure, I wasn't.
Okay, we're not doing that, okay.
No, but I actually have a question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
I was under the impression that, you know, you come and you ask for permission. But I had, I had heard that we can't close down the street for the same event twice.
No, I think that we were just trying to get clarification. Is this going to be a twice-a-year event or a once-a-year event?
Well, we would like for it to be twice a year. But, you know, it was more informational as to why I included it.
Okay.
But, you know.
The trunk-of-treat thing might be something different.
Okay.
Because now what we have is just a brigade of 400 kids that come marching down.
Right.
And their parents come marching down, and it's a fire drill, basically from up here in the parking lot where they form. They come down Liberty, hook a left onto Central, and come up one side of Central Street. And again, it might be something different in the area. And again, more the merrier that come in, whether here in Foxborough or outside of Foxborough, come and enjoy some, a different sort of an event. And so I think more or less to be creative and come up with something that would be different and that we could promote and maybe get some fun out of that. And again, give the businesses something different to do as well. So you almost rely on the people with the cars, you know, again, that trunk-and-treat sort of thing to provide candy to the kids.
Right, right.
And again, closing the street, we have to close it anyway in October when we do it. We close it again in the same spot. And it might be just a little bit more, I don't know, I don't know what the right word is, less scary.
Yeah, yeah, so the one that you're talking about, the parade, like the recreation does.
Yes.
Kind of tagging on to that. So I, honestly, I thought that you guys were kind of changing something. That's why we had you come back in, but it sounds like it's the same event.
No, it is the same thing. A couple of, I will tell you that after that initial car show, we actually got emails, are you doing one, like, another one? Because we, you're going to do one in the fall. I mean, I've already gotten probably 10, 20 emails as to when this year's one is happening. I mean, people from like, out of the woodwork, you had no idea that these, these people in Foxborough had these, like, cool cars. And, you know.
I think Jay's got one.
Yeah, I do.
Seemed like a parade or two.
But, you know, it was just a really nice event to look down Central Street and just see people and just the cars. And it was fun. One idea that we did have, just to kind of plug it a little bit, is we are thinking of having a scavenger hunt to sort of also wrap in some of the businesses around the Common, like, you know, Station One. We might put, like, the old fire truck there from, from there, and they get a stamp. And they could go maybe to another place and, you know, at the end, there'll be a raffle and do something like that so we can pull in some more businesses to get some more exposure. Because we were really fortunate last year to have a lot of people sponsor it, but didn't necessarily get, like, the exposure that they should have gotten.
See, it's not a, you can't do these things as a one-shot deal. You've got to build on it.
Yeah, yeah, sounds great.
Yeah.
Appreciate your support.
Of course.
Well, tagging on what Leah just said, I mean, if you speak with Renee or Mark, I mean, the tree lighting became just, not just the tree lighting, it became a much bigger event and.
It felt safer, too, like you said, Jay.
Yeah, and it was.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, when you can collaborate and coordinate, right, with, with, with other groups, it makes a huge difference. And again, it draws more in, because it's, everybody's got kind of their own little set of followers, right? So if we can incorporate that and get three or four different groups, five groups, the Rodman Center, they might do something special that night, you know, kids movie, you know.
Cars?
Yeah.
Cars.
That would be awesome. All right, that's what we got on the list. Thank you, Leah. But that's the sort of thing that we have to, we have to think about, or, you know.
And really just kind of work together.
Yeah.
Because our groups are shrinking, you know.
Yeah, everywhere.
It'll be nice to sort of.
And it's nice that, again, the J.C.'s come ahead, come forward to do it.
Yeah.
Because if not for them, who?
Right.
It's not organized, it's not fun organizing these events. We try to get involved in a lot of them in Meansville. It's just, it's, it's, it's always a little difficult. So when somebody volunteers, they run with the ball, we're with you, you know?
Right.
So we'd appreciate your support.
Well, I think, I think we support you for sure, so.
Great.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we go to seek a motion? All right, great.
Okay, motion to approve the use of public way application to close Central Street from Wall to South Street for the Foxborough J.C.'s Car Show on Sunday, June 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
All right, great.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks. We'll see you soon. Take care.
All right, next we have Pat Murphy from the Y. You've got to tell us about your breakfast, too, while you're here, so. I was looking to plug in for that as well.
A full plug. I'll save that for the end. Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate it. So.
So we're here, we've done, we've done your race before, but, and we've done other races from Paeson, but starting a race at the Y is new.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're here to talk about. I think once we get through the first race, again, we probably won't have you come back like the others. But because we lost the use of the Schneider start, you know, some of these races are kind of shifting routes a little bit. It's the route we all know, but I think the start at the branch is just what's different, so.
Got you. So this, so the start of the branch, we have, we did that in 2017 and 18.
Okay.
Where we come out of the entrance exit, our long driveway. And so that, that is the proposed route. And so with that, and on Saturday, June 3rd, we are looking to, it's a temporary closure. We typically have a two-police detail where both of the officers have worked in lockstep right there at Mechanic to just do a stop at Mechanic to allow runners to come on out. And then from once runners make it out, they are to stay to the right within the route there. The second officer then makes their way to Chestnut and Mechanic as by the time the first pack and the other pack comes, they do do a staged stop at that intersection as runners will cross over. And now they're on the left side, but the sidewalk, they, they run the sidewalk the entirety up to the finish back into the Foxborough YMCA lot. But on Saturday, the 3rd, we are looking to bring, and now it is, it was formerly the Foxborough 5K, formerly the Livestrong at the YMCA 5K, and other names as well. But it is the Spear Family Kindness for Kids 5K and Fun Day. And for the past three, three races, we've done that over at Patriot Place. It's been a great venue, a nice draw as well. And we were really looking at it this year to bring more of that branch feel back and bring it back into the community as well, with all activities being housed at the YMCA, the kids' fun run, DJ onsite, vendors and activities all on the ball fields as well. And utilizing with Schneider's approval, which we do have verbal, and we're getting their official paperwork to utilize their lot right across the street for all parking for racegoers that day. We will also be shutting the, well, not opening the YMCA until 11:00 a.m. on that Saturday. So that traffic, that competition won't be there as well. We learned our lesson 2016 with that, and we did shut it down in 17 and 18.
Okay. And will someone be there to help cross right there as well?
Yes, yeah. So when we do request the details, we do that for the timing. Not only will we have up to 10 parking attendants over at the Schneider lot, but we will have an officer right there at Mechanic Street for that one.
Okay, great. Any questions on this one?
Nope.
All right, great. So I think we're ready for a motion?
Motion to approve the use of public way application to close all portions of Mechanic Street, Baker Street, Chester Street, and the Pondev and Foxhill Road for the Hockamock Area YMCA Spear Family Kindness for Kids 5K and Fun Day Saturday, June 3rd, from 7:30 to 10:30 a.m. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then before we go, tell us about the breakfast, and tell us about the Spear Challenge for the, for the Splash fans, too.
Terrific, full agenda, all right.
Yeah.
We'll do the breakfast first. So for many who have attended our annual Reach Out for Youth and Families kickoff breakfast, we are back, we're happy to be back on St. Patrick's Day, the Friday, March 17th, at Gillette. And that morning, we are looking to fill the room with 600 of our friends and community members to ultimately kick off our campaign. If you've been to one of our breakfasts, it's a morning of impact, without a doubt, where we have the ability to tell our story. And this year, we are excited to really get back in the spirit as, with the COVID push and rescheduling. For many, it may feel like, was I just at the breakfast, as we did do it this past fall over at Gillette. But for that morning, we have a great lineup of testimonial speakers, as well as the ability for people to really see the community work that's going on within the YMCA. Just this past year, we awarded $2.7 million in subsidies and assistance throughout our YMCA, which is roughly about $650,000 more than 2021. So the need is there. And ultimately, that morning, we look to rally our difference-makers and kick off our campaign in fine fashion and style. And what better way to start St. Patrick's Day than a great morning? So the doors will open at 7:00 a.m. for networking, 7:30, the breakfast starts. And we are very prompt and tight with our agenda. We promise to have everyone out of there at 9:00 a.m., for those that do need to head off to work as well. So RSVPs, I can make sure to send, send the official invitation out.
I think we got it.
Terrific.
Yep.
Well, we would love to see everybody that day for a morning of impact.
It's really a great morning if you've never had a chance to go.
Awesome. And lastly, so our, the Spear Challenge and match that's out there, and so in Foxborough and at our location, we're excited to soon be breaking ground as everything is coming together with all approvals to the long-awaited Splash Park outside at the Foxborough Branch. So a great addition, not only for the YMCA, but the Foxborough community and all communities we serve at large. And with the kindness of the Spears being a lead donor within, within this project, they have put out a challenge to the community for upwards to $100,000. That will be matched dollar-for-dollar, as we do put that out in front of our community and our stakeholders. And we are looking for businesses, organizations, individuals to help get engaged and involved to really help make an impact, but ultimately, double their impact with what they do choose to put towards this capital project. When I was the executive director at the Foxborough Branch, this was conversations that we started, and I couldn't be happier to see this coming to fruition. And if all goes to plan, it'll be up and operating for summer camp this summer. And we are really looking forward to adding that to our Hockamock Area YMCA and the Foxborough location, so.
Great addition.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk about that.
Lot going on at the Y, so thanks, thanks for updating us, so.
Thank you.
All right, great. Well, good luck with the race and everything else.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you, Pat.
All right. So now we are on to the finance discussion, the 20 fiscal year '24 budget presentation. And we do have Chief Kelleher in the room. We have Marie and George. Anyone on Zoom as well for this part of the discussion?
Chief Grace, and I believe.
He's joining us, I presume.
Chris Gallagher might be joining us later as well.
Chief Grace is on, right?
Yes.
And did you say someone else besides Gallagher?
Chris Gallagher.
Just, okay, okay, all right.
He had a family thing that we're trying, he's going to join afterwards.
All right, great. So typically, this is where we'd see the budget for the first time. There are some new positions that we're going to talk about as well. So I will turn this over to the group. We have about a half an hour for this discussion. So just department heads, you know, do you want anyone to go for a half an hour? Get all she had the time? Okay.
So I, I will start the discussion this evening, but, but just by saying that we did provide you with, with essentially two, two versions of the budget. One was the version that closely mirrored the direction that this board gave us when we first kicked off the budget discussion back in December. And which was to try and get, get to a 3% budget, which we came very, very close to that, 3.02%, if I'm not mistaken now. So this, the, however, during the, during the budget review process that, that we undertake at the department, at the town manager level, we were able to hear several instances, several cases that were made by department heads, particularly Fire Police and DPW, that made very compelling presentations indicating that they really could use some additional help. And that was based on the number of incidents that are currently escalating, as well as just the genuine, genuine need to try and meet the demands of, of, of the jobs themselves. So I've actually given everybody here the option of looking at that as opposed to just outright cutting it, because I think I'd be irresponsible in saying to you those, those needs aren't real, but they are real. I think it's something that should be considered by the board as, as, as part of your deliberations. So I've given you both versions. It will be up, up to you to give us guidance further. And then ultimately, it'll be up to the ICOM to see if they, if they agree to support that as well. And then ultimately, town meeting. So I'm going to turn the budget presentation itself over to Marie, who's actually done a terrific job of putting this document together and putting all the detail that goes along with it. So I think she hasn't slept in about three weeks trying to put all this information together, but it's, it's really well-done. And I'm going to turn it over to her so that she can give us the details of where we're at.
And just before we get started, just to kind of level set, too. So this is our first presentation of this. It doesn't mean we can't have more discussions. Like, we can kind of digest this and come back and, and talk as a board, for sure. So, you know, we probably do need to get the budget calendar in here, just to make sure that we're all, you know, kind of know what's coming next. And it will keep us honest as well, so.
All right, Marie, it's up to you. It's all yours.
So I'm sitting down today because my feet hurt. That's why I'm here, so.
At the point, towards that. There you go.
So before we get into the next year's budget, I wanted to go over the current budget. So the slide here shows us where we are with our revenues. Property taxes, we're at 74.4% collected, local receipts, 71%, state aid, 57.7%. And overall general fund, we're at 71.5% collected. And just some highlights, our local receipts right now are 2.1 million or 63%, 63% higher than this time last year. And the, the overall general fund is 5.8 million or 12.2% higher than where we were last year. Our property tax and state aids revenues remain strong. And just as a final note, our motor vehicle commitment, which is our, our large one, it's about $2.4 million is going out within the next couple of weeks. So we'll start to see some of that money coming in, driving up that local receipt number even more. Here are the expenses. So nothing of concern here, you know, departments continue to stay within their budgets and, you know, take advantage of any grants that are available. We have general fund, 59.4%, public safety, 61%, education, 46%, public works, 59%, human services, 60%, culture and recreation, 56.5%, debt service, 52.2%, and insurance and other, 75%. Typically around this time, if each, every month was equal, you would see the budget's about 60% spent. We're just below that, and there are some expenses that occur at different times of the year. For example, our debt service payments, we, we also pay the debt, the pension assessment. We pay debt service throughout the year, the big property and liability insurance bill. That gets paid right off the bat in July, so that's why you'll see that insurance and other numbers fairly high. But that's normal. Then we get into the budget. So the general fund, right now, the preliminary number, and this is the version of the budget that includes no positions. So the budget book was built off of this version of the budget. So right now, the proposed general fund budget is at $84,233,883. And on the left side are your revenue sources. I know it's, it's, it's a little small. On the right side, you have your expenses. Once again, your tax levy is your major revenue source at 68% of the overall budget.
And this is without the new expenses?
That's correct.
Will we get into with the new expenses later?
Yeah, once we, once we narrow it down to just one budget, we'll.
Okay.
Make the final book based off of that. Then the next one is your water fund. That's coming in at $7,168,858. 97% of that is revenues, 3% is retained earnings. As we go through the budget process, we adjust that. And then on your right side, you have your breakout of the expenses. Kind of a split between debt service and operating expenses. Next, you have your sewer fund. That's at $1,764,710. Once again, we, we do the same thing we do with the water budget, where we do 97% revenues, 3% retained earnings. And the sewer budget is mostly operating expenses. So here we show the proposed budget increases. So total budget, right now, we have it at 3.02%. What you, the numbers that you see there are the, the dollar amount increases and the percentage increases. So on the left side, you have your overall budget. On the right side, we broke out the enterprise funds. And you'll see that the water fund is going down, and sewer fund is going up just slightly. And that's mainly due to the Mansfield, Norton, Foxborough sewer assessment. And I'll go through the percentage increases on the next slide. So general government. I'll go through the percentage increases on the next slide. So general government, so overall, that's a 6.48% increase. In that budget, you have, so we're seeing increases in fuel costs, utilities, building maintenance, we have software renewals, and just overall increases to normal operating expenses due to inflation. One of the big drivers in that function is, so the town is looking to purchase Office 365. So we were notified by our insurance company that as of July 1st of this year, we'll need to have multi, I think it's multi-factor authentication. And the good thing about Office 365 is that it comes with that and gives us even more security. It gives us more flexibility with file sharing as well. So, and that's, that's about a $100,000 a year cost. So really, on the general government, it's, it's mainly your fuel, utilities, and the Office 365, that's what's really driving up that, that function. Next, you have a public safety. So with the most recent contracts that were ratified, there were some costs such as, you know, stipends and other incentives that weren't funded previously, so we're just going back and adding the funding for that. In fiscal year '23, right now, we, there was a new position that was created, a community response social worker. And what we did with that position is we pulled money out of the, the fire budget. They used to have two administrative assistants. They currently only have one, so we pulled money out of fires, shifted it over to the joint public safety building budget, and then supplemented the rest just to fund that position. We're also seeing huge increases to police cruisers. It's anywhere between 10,000 and 15,000 more per vehicle than what we were paying just last year. And then just your regular, you know, maintenance and supplies are going up. Another driver in this function is the SEMREC assessment. We were paying 300 grand, now it's up to 450.
But that was planned, just stop there.
That was a plan, yeah, that was a plan. I just want, I want everybody to understand that, that, that was a planned increase. For the first three years, we paid a, a level, an amount of $300,000 with, because we were receiving a grant from the state on that. Now that grant has run out after the first three years, and now we're, we're paying, there'll be, it'll be 150,000 this year, another 150,000 next year. So that will actually, that'll, that will increase that to real, to the real operating cost of what that, of what SEMREC really is.
And still have savings over what?
Still have savings over above what we've, what we've been paying, that's right.
If you still had the dispatching in-house, you'd be probably paying 700, 800,000 a year.
Actually, over a million, over a million dollars.
Or even more, yeah.
Over a million dollars.
Excuse me, were the stipends not paid because of COVID? What was the issue there?
No, it was just the contracts were renegotiated, and we're just going back and adding the money to cover all of those, because the, a lot of the stipends did go up, and we just didn't have enough money in the budget. So now we're just going back and just making sure that the money's there to cover any contractual obligations that we have.
And, and I thought that the community response social workers covered. What are we saying? We need to now backfill that position, so it's a new head?
No, it's, it's actually what's happened is they, they took the money from, they took a position from the fire department.
Okay.
And they moved it into the new public safety, so it's shared between the two departments.
Okay.
So we just, we shifted the body and the money
Okay.
over to the, the joint public safety building. And overall, that's a 7.28% increase. Next is education. Public schools is going up 2.99%, and that's mostly due to salaries that are expensive. Budget is actually going down. The southeastern regional assessment, we learned recently that enrollment is down, so right now, we have that budget flat. That was what they recommended to us. We'll probably see that number come down a little bit.
Marie, you just mentioned the schools, the budget is coming down, you're referring to, the head count is coming down?
Yeah, the, the enrollment, yeah.
Enrollment, or?
Southeastern specifically.
Southeastern, yes.
Southeastern.
What about southeastern?
That's what the, see, a southeastern assessment is, is, has a reduced enrollment.
Oh, I don't, I don't care about that.
That's what she was talking about.
Right.
Yes.
Enrollment hasn't come down generally on the school side of the equation, the town school side. It's the southeastern side that's gone down.
Oh, that's, yeah, no, I wasn't talking about that. I was asking about enrollment at Foxborough and then head count at Foxborough.
We don't have those numbers yet. Usually, they prepare a chart that shows that.
That's a question, good ask, a good question to ask at, at the hearing.
Yeah. That's something that we typically do add in the budget book once we have it.
Got it, thanks.
So then, overall, the, the education is going up 2.93%. Next is public works, overall 5.7, 5.67% increase. And in that budget, it's an overall increase in the day-to-day expenses, supplies, equipment, maintenance, all due to inflation. And they express the need for funds for stormwater management, engineering services, and roadway maintenance. Next is human services, that's a 3.93% increase, and the majority of that is an additional 20,000 that human services requested for, to cover veterans' benefits, because they are seeing a huge increase in healthcare costs for veterans and, and also funeral costs. So that's why that function is, is up high. Library is up at 3.45%, and that's in order for them to comply with the minimum spending requirements set by the, the library, library commissioners. Then next function is debt service, and that's actually going down. Then you get into insurance and other. Overall, it's 3.25%. Our pension assessment actually came in much lower than what it usually is. Usually, we're up about 7.5%, 8% every year, came in at 4%. And next year will be the same, too. OPEB is now an operating budget, and this was a recommendation from our auditors. So that's, that's included in this budget now. So you'll no longer see a separate town meeting article for that. It'll be part of the, the budget article. Yep.
Is the pension assessment because of the mortality rate going down, or what's driving it?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fair question, Dennis. I don't know the exact driver for that, but what, it, it looks as though that's, we've had a, a number of, the mortality rate is, mortality rate is a factor, that people have been.
There's probably a lot of factors that go into the actuary tables, it's probably.
There's, they did redo their, so they have an actuarial study done every two years. They had one done as of 2022.
That's when it usually doesn't go down, that's why.
Yeah.
I know that the investments did really well, so that's also a playing factor.
It, it actually went up in other towns, Dennis, but it didn't go, it didn't go up in Foxborough. Foxborough's numbers were down.
Yeah, and, and they break it out by community, so you could see what your liability is. I can share that document with you all. I think it might be on the website, or maybe not, the Norfolk County.
Assessments?
The actuarial.
We have that number.
Yeah. If, if it's not on the website, we'll, we'll get it up there. We have group insurance right now is estimated at 5.5% increase, and then property and liability, we have it at 1.5%. We're still waiting for those numbers. Those may come in even lower than that. And then finally, enterprise funds. I mentioned earlier that overall, those budgets are going down. Water and enterprise is decreasing by 3.4%, mostly due to a reduction in their debt service. And then sewer is increasing by 2.1%, and that's due to the increase in the, the sewer assessment.
Do the, for the group insurance, do the, do the employees also share in that increase for their contribution premiums as well?
Yes.
Yeah, currently, it's a 70-30 split and 50-50 for retirees.
The next slide is just a visual, just showing you the history. So the 2021 and 2022 are actual spending. 2023 is the current budget, and 2024 is the proposed budget. This slide is just a summary of the revenue and expenses. So when we do the budget, we, you're supposed to show everything. So from all of your revenue sources down to your operating budgets, and some of the other expenses that you have to cover, such as state assessments, if you have a deficit in snow and ice in the current year, that's something that you have to make up for in the next budget. We set aside money for overlay to cover any abatements and exemptions for the next year. And then obviously, your, your OPEB, which is now actually in the operating budget. So right now, the tax levy, we have it going up 3.95%. And that's your, your standard 2.5%, prop 2.5 increase. We're estimating new growth at, I believe we have 915,000 right now, which is just an average. And then you add in your current debt exclusions, and that's how you get the 60.3 million that we have there. State aid, we still don't know what the state is doing, so we have that flat for the moment. You can usually expect to pick up maybe another between 60 to 100 grand in state aid. Local receipts, we're trying to get back to normal. The average before COVID was 11.7 million. So we're just trying to get back to normal where, where we were before COVID. And then you're available in other category, that includes your free cash, you have overlay, your indirect costs. Trying to think of what else. Yeah, it's indirect costs. That category is going down because we are using less free cash for this budget, and we're hoping to even bring that number down further. For the current budget, we used a million dollars free cash for this one. Right now, we're down to 800,000 and hoping to bring that number down even further. Then, so overall, revenues, 97.4 million or 2.94% increase. Then you get into your expenses. Town government, we're at 21 million. Education, 41.6 million. Shared expenses, your debt, insurance, pensions, those are at 21.5 million. Your enterprise funds are at 8.9 million. And then the other category are your, what I mentioned earlier, state assessments, your snow and ice deficit, overlay, and these numbers will get finalized before we go to town meeting. So bottom line expenses, including those other expenses I just talked about, is 97.4 million or 3%. And bottom line, we're showing a, a surplus of, I know it's a huge surplus of $136, but we're in balance right now. So that's, that's the, the important, the important thing. So this is just a breakout of the, the tax levy. As I mentioned, it's a 2.5% increase, new growth is an average right now of 915. We should know, usually, we know that number sometime in the fall, but we have a good indication by the time the budget goes to town meeting of what that number is going to be. So that's, when you add those up, you get your levy limit, and then you add in your debt exclusions, and that's how you get the 60.3 million. Then we add to the state aid, which is currently flat. So as the Commonwealth goes through, through its budget process, we go through and update this revenue source. Local receipts. So as I mentioned, we're trying to get back to normal. And you'll see, as I mentioned earlier, the average before COVID was 11.7 million. We're still being conservative, because as you saw earlier, our revenues are, are way up. And we've actually, one of the big revenue sources is, is the payment in lieu of taxes. In the current fiscal year, we've already exceeded our estimate, and that's not even including the spring concerts that are coming up. For some reason, Taylor Swift draws a huge crowd, and we see big money, you know, when she's in town. And she's gonna be here two nights, I mean, three nights.
Three nights.
Three nights. So we should expect some good money coming in.
Small girl, but about three quarters of a billion dollars is where I see women.
So for the most part, local receipts, we usually try to use averages. There are some one-time revenues. So like, for example, with the stadium, with that big renovation they're doing over there, the building permit revenue that came from that, we know that that's not a ongoing thing. So we, we try to adjust for that stuff. And if we know of any projects that are coming up, or any concerts that we know are coming up, you could budget for those things because you know they are going to happen. But like I said, for the most part, we just go with averages here. And the 11.7 is, it's not unreasonable. You could see in fiscal year '22, we brought in 11.8 million. And that's, that year, it, I think it only included, I think we had two, two concerts at the end of fiscal year '22. So imagine if you had seven, eight concerts, that number would be up way higher.
So just to, just so everybody's, there was another announcement for a new concert today for Bruce Springsteen in August. This will be, this marks the biggest concert year ever at July Stadium, biggest concert year. So that's gonna, that's a good news for our revenue side. It's also, you know, just, you know, it's good for the town, the overall economy. It's not good news for the public safety guys.
It's great for public safety, I see.
They, they like it too, but they also don't like it because it really is an impact on them too, so. But having said that, that's, that will actually contribute really, really well to the, the overall bottom line for, for, for stadium revenues.
So then we get into the available funds. So you have your overlay surplus, where you take what you have available right now, and you deduct any outstanding prior year taxes. So that's how we get the 730. As we go through and collect more of those old receivables, this number will go up. Then you get to free cash, we have that at 800,000. I'm hoping to bring that down even further. We'll see as we go through the, the budget process. Ambulance fund, we have that at 1.7 million. Rec revolving, we actually went through and did that calculation. And whereas they don't have any full-time staff that are being paid through the revolving, that's why that number is very low. And in the older years, where you see the 59,000, 61,000, they actually had two full-time staff members that were being paid out of.
They do still have one staff.
They have one.
She comes out of the general.
She pays for the budget.
Oh, okay, thank you.
She pays for the budget, yeah.
So we charge, yeah, the revolving for any full-time staff. And that 2,600 is actually the, the Medicare for the summer staff. Then you get to your indirect costs for water and sewer. Once again, these numbers were calculated, and they're going up about 20,000?
Yeah.
Then the other budget items to consider, I know we've already kind of talked about this, but I wanted to cover it a little further. So there were, I think in total, there were 10 positions that departments requested. Bill is recommending six of those. So he's recommending an additional lieutenant for police and an additional patrol officer, and fire, two additional firefighters slash EMTs. In DPW, during the pandemic, they actually took a position away from highway and moved it to the mechanics division. And now they're, they're finding that they have, they still have that need in the highway division, so they're just trying to backfill that position. And then in water sewer, I don't know if some of you may recall, a couple of years ago, the, the support was there for an, an additional coordinator position for them. So now they're just bringing that forth again.
Why that position is really important is because that will back up the person who does all the billing for the water, water and sewer department. And if something were to happen, God forbid, in that situation, it would put us in a very difficult position. So I think this was, this is really providing some backup support for that, that position. That's why it was being supported before the pandemic. But now it's back, and then the position has not gone away.
The other one I asked about the, the mechanic too, just to make sure there's no confusion with like the fire apparatus and that, just to clarify that too.
Right. That's just, that's the mechanics position for the, all the general town vehicles.
Yeah, it's not backfilling because of that.
It's not, it's not a fire position.
And the positions that Bill is recommending won't, will not all be starting on July 1st. Some of them are actually, or if, if you, if you and AdCom and town meetings support them, some of them would be starting in January. So you're only talking about half a year's cost for those. And if, if you were to fund all of these positions, as he recommended, you're talking about $299,000 or 0.321% of the budget.
Which is, what, what does that represent?
Yes.
Yes. Salary and, and supporting costs, right.
And benefits.
Right.
That includes benefits?
Well.
That's just strictly salary.
Yeah, strictly salaries, strictly salaries.
All right, so that plus 40% or so for?
Well, we actually do carry some additional money in that, in the budget for that, those types of things, because there is, you know, there were changes that happened throughout the year. And so we, we did, we'd always carry a little bit of an extra, extra room in that budget for that reason.
I don't follow that. What do you mean?
Well.
I don't follow that, what do you mean? Carry?
Your, your, your health insurance.
Health insurance.
Trying to put it directly to like today is exactly, I'm making up a number, three hundred and fifty people on this, a hundred and fifty on that. If you went exactly during the year, there is what you call these, these moments where somebody has a personal crisis or what have you, and can say, well, my, my husband lost his job, they can go over to our health insurance, they might have been on there. So you have to leave a little bit of space. So what Bill is trying to say is, that's not an exact number, there's a little bit of space in there for that type of movement, so you could, you can carry it within that budget as it stands.
And it varies from year to year, because for instance, I know, I know one position particularly, that's not going to require health insurance coming up.
Right.
For a replacement, so that's, that, and there's gonna be others as well that are in that situation.
And I think it will be important too, to hear from department heads, like, also, what are you doing as a department to save money elsewhere? Like, I think that will help. At least I'm interested too, in hearing that story, like, okay, you know, even if you can't cover it all the way, tell me how you're getting creative, tell me what you've done to save, you know, as we, as we look at that.
Okay. So, so real, real cost out the door is three hundred, and I'm not sure what the budget stuff you're talking about is, but there's generally thirty to forty percent incremental cost on that, so that's gonna be, you know, four hundred fifty thousand added to the budget, if you consider all the, the cost of the benefits, the real cost, okay? So that's one thing. And then, secondly, around the incremental headcount, part of the reason we're thinking about and moving towards financial trend monitoring is to help us understand why these incremental heads make sense for the town. So when we're thinking about, you know, one police or any of these, what's helpful and makes the case best is actual data that shows. Bill, you mentioned instances or?
Incidents.
Incidents. That type of support for these positions is, I think, really impactful and helps tell the story and make the case.
I agree, and I, actually, they did present that information to me.
Excellent.
So, and I'm gonna have, Chief Kelleher is here, Chief Grace is on the line, and I know Chris will join as well, and Chris is on the line as well, so I'd rather have them present that information, or those, those facts to you, so you can have a better understanding of that.
Great, thank you.
So is our intent to run through all these tonight?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question.
And the presentations from the department heads, and, I mean, this is obviously very different than what we've done before. That's where, I'm just trying to wrap my head around timing and what you need from us. This goes to AdCom starting tomorrow. What's being presented to AdCom? Is it with the positions? Is it without the positions? So I guess that's just where I'm trying to wrap my head around what that looks like.
So you have two budgets. You have the budget that you requested.
Yep.
Which Bill stuck to, which is really the one that Marie just presented. Then he's presented to you an alternative budget saying, this is something you should consider, okay, with that extra two hundred or so in it, which has all the backup from the chiefs and, and Chris, okay? So when you get to it, then it would be something that you'd have to say, like, I'm, I'm going to assume when people come in to do their presentation, were you prepared to do that? You're not prepared to do that tonight.
Yeah, like, is that, that's what I'm asking, like, I get that, we've got two budgets, but are you asking us to vote on one tonight, or?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, no, okay, so we don't need to make that decision, we can.
No, no.
And is it normal? Four AdCom meetings seems light to get through the whole budget, is that normal, AdCom people?
Well, don't forget, there's, the departments have been consolidated now, so there's fewer departments to actually present budgets.
So can that, so four nights for, for AdCom?
It's tight.
For the budget?
Yeah.
Entire budget?
Yeah.
That's less than normal.
Okay, so that's, I just wasn't sure if it was definitely less than normal, was my gut.
Well, it was more last year, but we consolidated all the departments, and now they're fewer departments.
Right, right, but still, they have to get, no matter how many departments had, you still have to get through all the data and the whole budget, so you're still getting through the same.
One person is gonna be bringing, instead of different people, one person's gonna be bringing forward six budgets.
So it sounds like the department heads, based on the shaking of your head, you're planning on presenting the, doing your formal presentation at AdCom.
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I know, I, I tried to join a lot of AdCom last year, and that's my intent. I, I wish it was televised, I know it's not, so we'll try to get here, but, okay. I just, sorry, I just wanted to like, just back it up, make sure we all understood what we were being asked to do, where we're at.
Yeah.
The discussion tonight.
And I know, I know, la- last year, my, my work schedule has changed a little bit, so I'm a little bit more free on Wednesday nights. If you can get to an AdCom meeting, which I know you, you, when they were televised, you were tuning in, because I know you were bringing.
Even in person, because my son actually goes to basketball at seven, which is at the Igo, so it's absolutely perfect.
Perfect timing for you. Yeah, I mean, it's, I, you know, I brought it before, and I know there isn't enough time for us to hear, and people have come to two different boards to hear, but I, I said it once before, the difference in what I was, the information I was given at AdCom, and then, I mean, we're basically asked to do the same exact thing, is to, to recommend a budget. And so, I mean, I, I would suggest, I'm glad that this year, Wednesdays are a little more free for me. There is, there's just so much more by seeing, and I think you probably noticed that last year when you were.
And I, and I think, go into a lot of. You know, I don't think it's everything, but I do think the add of new positions is something that we probably do have to hear a little bit more about, so maybe we just figure out what that looks like. Maybe it's a meeting where you guys each come in and you have, you know, once you go through it at AdCom, figure out how much time you think it is, and we get that maybe on our next agenda to hear a little bit more about those, because I do think that level of detail is appropriate for us to hear, whereas I don't think we need to go through the, the same lines that, that we do in AdCom. I do think, you know, new positions, especially when we're talking six, you know, we're not, we're not talking one or two.
This is different, and I, I acknowledge that, but I, but I didn't want you to not see that the need is there. And I think it's important that if you want to have, you know, an individual presentation by the fire chief, the police chief, and DPW director, so that you have a better understanding of that, for your ability to recommend the budget, so be it, and we're happy to do that for you. So the question is, how do you, how would you like to proceed is really the direction we're looking for.
Yeah, I think we've got a lot of time. You know, not, not that we have a lot of time, it's gonna come up quick, but I do think hearing from the department heads about the new, the new positions is something that, that is important for us to hear, that's my, that's my thought. You know, and then I think we also need to think about like, what other positions, you know, I know that there's maybe some other consolidations or changes as well, so just even thinking down the road, like, two years, you know, what else do we need to think about? If we're thinking about six positions, what else do we need to be thinking about in the next twenty-four months as well?
I'm, I'm curious about the four positions you decided not to put forward, that's.
Yeah, right.
Would lead right into, okay, somewhere down the road.
Exactly.
That's gonna come up again.
You know, we had an assistant town manager, is kind of what I'm saying, you know, like, I just don't know what that will look like, you know, I don't know that we, do we need it, just, just throwing it on the table.
Well, there were, there was actually, the four positions were, there were two additional firefighters and two additional police officers they were looking for, so that was, that makes rounds off the ten. I always, I was, I could, I was not comfortable recommending four in each, however, I think that there was, there was reasonable room for us to do at least two this year, and then maybe look at two in another year at each.
And if I might, through the chair, you know, I know a few of you were on AdCom, but, you know, just to throw it out there one more time, I think it's a darn shame that it's not, it's not on TV again this year.
Agreed.
I think it's horrible. I, I think it's a shame, we, we had a couple of years where I, I think a lot of people really had a good grasp of the budget because it was on TV, and for them not to do it this year, personally, I think is wrong.
Have they taken a vote again this year?
Not to my knowledge.
I think we should.
I believe they did early on.
Oh, early, that's right, yeah.
I remember seeing it on an agenda.
Yeah, I think they did.
Well, because, because that, you know, just like this board, that committee changes, you know, I mean, every, every year, there might be somebody coming off, somebody coming on. I mean, I can only speak for myself, you know, when that was, I think we, there was a little push, we were getting some pressure to, to put it on television, we voted, I'm only speaking for myself. I didn't have a problem with it. I, I will, I always say, I will back up anything that comes out of my mouth, you know, if, if I'm wrong and somebody corrects me, I will, you know, so I didn't have a problem with it. You know, I like, I don't know, I, I think Seth, well, there was a lot of, it was on television when you were chair, because that was for COVID, so I'm not sure how you've, because I went off that year, so I don't know how, how your, your committee felt. I agree with you, Doc. Unfortunately, I don't think, I mean, they, they make that decision, they're an autonomous board, so, committee, so they make that decision, but I, I agree with you, because there's, I, just from moving from that committee to this board, see the, a huge difference in the information that, that I was getting, unless you can go, go to the meeting, so I, I agree with you. I think the only other comment I want to make, just a general comment, I'm not sure if you guys are hearing some of the stuff I'm hearing, people are very upset on how much their taxes have gone up. I, I don't ever remember, and I know, I know it wasn't so much the, the rate, it was the assessment. And I think I said, when we heard the assessment, you know, when Cecil was here, you know, the, it, it's great to know that your home has value, but it really only matters if you're selling your home. If you're not selling your home and you're staying in your home, I live in a small house, so I can't even imagine, I guess it's all relevant by, by how big your, your, your property is and your home is. I don't ever remember, mine went up over two hundred dollars a quarter. I, I looked at it and I grabbed, you know, to see my last one, I always feel like it was somewhere in that forty to fifty dollars, for me, a quarter, so a couple hundred dollars a year. Mine went up eight hundred and eight dollars for the year. I don't ever remember my taxes going that much, and so around town, people are coming up to me and they're saying, what happened? And then they hear us talk about all these concerts and all the money coming in, and they still wonder why they're paying so much in taxes. And I, I just think, you know, we don't know with the next couple of years, we're, we're out, you know, out of the real COVID year, you know, energy costs, you know, there's so many costs that are going up, your, your food bill, everything. I think we need to stay as lean as we can for a year or two. I'm not saying I don't support these positions, because like Leah said, I haven't heard what the support is for them, so I'm not saying that at all. But what I am saying is, you know, the money's coming in, we're gonna have a good concert season, but then, you know, what if next year isn't a good concert season? And I'm worried about sustaining all the new positions. The last thing I want to see is down the road, us having to lay people off, you know, you know, so I just feel like we need to be very lean, as lean as we can, at least the next couple of years. So that's a general comment about, about the budget, and that's without hearing all, all the presentations, but it's just a general comment.
And, and we get that, we completely understand that. So if you take a look at the last three years, the average budget increase was under three percent, two point eight percent, two point eight eight percent. That was with no positions added, and yet, if you take a look at, and you'll see the numbers when they make the presentations, the number of runs, the number of arrests, the number of actions taken by the police department, fire department, and the number of, of incidents requiring response by the DPW department is, is climbed significantly. And the reason is because, you know, we, we just live in a different kind of world today. And I think, and, and what, what further complicates that for them, in the fire department, is the fact that, you know, they have longer runs to go now, because they have a hospital that, that has to get to, that's further away, and two hospitals that are down now, actually because of that. But on the police side, you know, it, it's, if you take a look at the world we live in right now, it's become much more complicated. And I think that's, that's the reason why, I, it'd be irresponsible of me to not to bring those things forward to you. You really need to look at that seriously. I completely get the issue about the, about keeping things lean, but if you take a look at two point eight percent over three, averaged over three years, and the budgets, and the bills went up, it wasn't a function because of the budget, it was a function of value. Everybody's values went up, and that's what happened.
So we have until March twenty-eighth, but until we have to vote on the budget. So we, we have some time, I don't think that we need to decide on these positions tonight, and I actually think it would be unfair to even, you know, go there, but we haven't heard the presentations yet. So my thought is, we get this scheduled, you know, with ten minutes for each department or position or whatever it is, you know, maybe we can run through that with police and fire each kind of have two, so like in forty minutes, and, and kind of hear from that, let us take some questions, hear the data, hear where you guys have, you know, been creative or made saves on the, on the flip side as well. And obviously, try to attend AdCom in the meantime as well, but I do think we need to hear more about those before we. Sounds like someone's.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to weigh in on, on any of these positions before AdCom has a chance to.
I agree.
Because I think that could send them a signal.
So.
The budget that's presented to AdCom though is from?
Is not with the new positions, right? That's, that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm.
They receive the same.
They receive the same thing, same thing.
Same that you did, yeah.
The same thing.
They're gonna get that, like, that's what I'm not.
Two versions, the same thing.
The two versions, okay, okay.
They get the two versions, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was kind of struggling with too, understanding, okay.
I mean, my understanding that, that AdCom's reaction, I think was last year, was, you know, why haven't you brought those things forward? And so, we're doing that now, and so we're gonna let, let them send their way in.
Yeah, I did sit in a meeting where I did hear that, you know, they want to hear, you know, if, if there's a need, you know.
Bring it forward.
What they receive is from us, right? We're presenting, so what they, the budget that is, the two versions that are put in front of advisory committee are considered submitted by the select board.
Right, so we gave the town manager direction, where to go on the budget, and then that's the town manager's.
Yes.
Budget right here.
Right.
Right, and so, but you mentioned that we are voting, this, the select board votes at the end of March.
Mm-hmm.
What does that vote represent?
On the final budget.
So advisory committee is not looking at the final budget?
They have a vote the week before us too, so they're making their votes, sorry, the day after us, the twenty ninth.
Right, so they're, they're voting on something that is not submitted or voted on by the select board.
It's their recommendation.
Yeah, we did give the recommendation for this one, the, the one, we took a vote on that with the direction on the three percent.
The three percent.
Right.
And you know something, somebody brought to my attention, and, you know, shame on me for not calling, I think last year, we actually recommended two and a half, and that's why we came in at the two point eight nine. And I, I wish I had remembered, because I thought we gave three percent last year, you know, too late now, I'm not trying to say, you know, but I, I would have, I, I think maybe we should have gone for the two and a half again. I think for some reason in my head, I thought we, we did three last year, and then somebody happened to say, you know, I think you guys recommended two and a half last year, and I said, oh geez, you know, so, I mean, too late now.
And we don't even know, I mean, really, with all the discussions, we'd have to go back and look before we run with, you know.
So my point is that the advisory committee is recommending a budget that is, may change.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
And I recall that that happened on the advisory committee, where we would recommend something, based, we would make a recommendation on a budget that we reviewed, and then the budget would come back different, based on changes made, and we're like, well, we recommended, our recommendation is based on what we reviewed, not what is, went to town meeting, so it's kind of, kind of funny.
But I think, isn't advisory committee going to hear, I mean, obviously, so they already have this budget book.
Yeah.
The original one, and they're, they're gonna get the revised, but when they actually hear from the department heads, they're gonna hear with the positions, aren't they?
They're gonna get both. See both.
Yeah.
Because just like you, they're gonna have the original one for the three.
Yeah.
Or, or the three point oh two, or whatever, and then they have the alternative, so let's just, for a second, they come up and say, you know something, I agree, but I think what they need, one more guy on whichever, okay, one of the, 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 what does that cost? It costs fifty thousand dollars plus another fifteen for this, and then they put it in, and that's our recommendation, meaning, meaning the advisory board. Then what would go on your thing? There's a, there's a line there on the town meeting that says, the advisory board recommends, right? Then there's one for the, the town manager or the select. And, and, and so you would, you know, I mean, you could have one that says, no, I, I, I say zero, okay, and then they say this, and then it would be up to the town meeting to, to vote it. preferably you'd want everybody to be on the same page, but you know.
So I guess we have to be, are we comfortable with, you know, this, this may flex, this is going to flex. Do we want to, you know, we have our budget that we're recommending, this is the budget that we've recommended. It may fluctuate based on what we hear, and we may make adjustments to our budget, which would then go down to them for their meetings.
So let's say in the last day before we vote, we add, add back four more people. We add the two firefighters back in and the two, um, police, uh, back in. And we add that, and then we say, this is final. An advisory committee recommend, made their recommendation based on plus six. We, we go to plus 10 on the last day.
Okay, then you'd have two separate, two separate lines. And I think the one that, that goes is the one, the, the, the final column on the town meeting warrant is the advisory.
Right.
Right. But I mean, that doesn't mean that that's the one you have to, that, 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 if you were a voter, you had to go with that. It's just, okay, here's what the selectmen said, here's what the advisory says.
Advisory committee makes a recommendation on a early version, base, in effect. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So we could add four people at the, at the last day, and advisory committee would say, that doesn't, that, we don't like that. We would not recommend that.
But they've heard it all along. Go ahead, go ahead, Doc.
No, but, and then that town meeting, both would be presented.
That's not the, but their recommendation is meaningless, is what I'm saying, because they've made a recommendation based on an early version, early iteration of a budget, yes.
So, so the additional four positions is not something I've recommended to you. I've not recommended it. So, so I think if you did, it would totally be on your own, own, own volition. But, but I think, you know, so I just to, to clarify, the only real difference this year, as opposed to doing it, what's been done in the past, is that you're going to take the time to listen to the other cases, to the cases to be made for the additional positions. You're going to hear at the same time almost that the, that the AdCom is going to hear it. That's the only difference.
And you just might say zero. No, no, not doing that.
So we, we say, you know, they're, we're going to see it at the same time. We decide 10 is better than six.
Okay. You have the right to do that.
Right.
Right.
But the advisory committee recommendation is based on whatever they heard, which would have been six. So the process is missing is.
They're going to, they're going to hear the same thing as well. So that's the difference. So.
But will the department heads, okay, are, are they going to go with what you recommended?
Department heads are going to, I, I presented, I, I presented them with my recommendation to you.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, but the AdCom can still ask them, why did you need four? All right? And they can ask them that question. That's entirely up to them. That's part of the process. So I think if they, um, and, and they'll answer honestly why, you know, I've said based upon how's I see the revenues and, and how this can, how this is laying out, that I think we could support the, the additional four, uh, six, uh, six positions. However, um, it's not going to be my decision ultimately, and recommendation is going to be this board as well as the AdCom.
And Marie or George, the, um, everything carried through the rest of the budget um, as far as insurance, it is, is on Bill's recommendation. So those numbers are all adjusted to adding six people as well.
Those, those should support the extra, because you, like, what, going back to Seth's original question or was, your health insurance, that's the real, that's the meat and potato one of it. Do we have an extra 100,000 in that account? I think we usually leave enough for what, about 10?
10 positions.
10 people come.
But that may change throughout the year because some people may, may drop off, some people may go on.
It almost seems cleaner to like, put it through with the six extra positions, that that's what everyone's looking at. And then we look at it as AdCom, and they look at it, do we recommend all six?
Yeah, I, I might just, very clean, like, to make my point, the AdCom is making recommendations on a preliminary budget. That's, that's what I'm challenging.
Right. I, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. So it almost, instead of having two budgets, it makes more sense in my head to just bring forward the budget with the six new positions so that we're all just working from one budget and then knock that down as needed versus saying, you've got this budget and this budget.
That's, that's another alternative.
Cleaner unless anyone disagrees to put it through with the six, just so we're all starting from the same baseline.
Is, is that what you're saying, Seth?
So ultimately, uh, what I would like to get to is they see the budget that we approve. The, the select board submits a budget to the advisory committee that says, this is our submission. Make your recommendation based on this. And they have the, because ultimately, I always understood when I was on the advisory committee, it was in effect, you know, quote unquote, their budget. So in other words, if they looked at a budget that they decided they wanted to reduce by a million dollars, they made that change. They were able to affect that change to the budget by a million dollars, and that's what went to town meeting.
That's right.
Well.
Which is powerful. It's more than just a recommendation.
Right.
That is a legitimate change to the, the bottom line.
But you, you have two columns on there. You have the recommendation or the, or the town manager or board of selectmen. And then you have their recommendation. And they could come back and say, if you did the six, okay? They might come back and say, the heck with that. I, I want to do 11, okay?
Well, I don't think they can. I don't think they can.
They can't go more.
They can't go more, they can't go more than what.
Well, than what was asked, okay.
They can't go more.
We all agree on that. They can go less, but they can't go more.
Then let's go the reverse way. They might say that, you, you, you know, instead of six, I don't, I want to take two off, okay? And, um, so, but you, you could have two different columns, okay, two different recommendations.
I'm not following what you mean by the.
When you go to the, I wish I had a town meeting.
If you look at a, at a, at a, a report for the warrant, for the warrant. It has, it has the town manager, selectman, actually has just a selectman.
I thought it was three. I thought it was town manager.
Request.
The department request.
Yeah. Department request.
Town manager, select board and AdCom.
And usually they're all, most of the times.
Because you're always in agreement.
Yeah, request.
So that they all look the same, you know, but, but that doesn't mean it has to be all the same. Do you follow me?
And that's what I have on here as one of the next steps, was to agree on a final budget. Um, because I agree, having two budgets is, I would have preferred to just have the one budget with the six positions and let you guys decide.
Right. And it's, in hindsight, it's too bad we didn't have that information when we voted on the budget. But we did, you know, like, that wasn't presented to us. So, you know, is it as clean as we would have liked? No, like, I would have liked to know on the six budgets. But here we are, this is what we, you know, after voting on the budget, now it's come to light that there's six positions that Bill does support, that the department heads would like to present. So although it's not ideal if we were, you know, hindsight is 2020, you know, how do we want to proceed with what goes to AdCom and what we do? So I think that's.
Well, technically, we didn't recommend this budget. We recommended that we stayed at 3%. And even the original.
Well, that was before we started, before you started.
It's only a fraction above.
But you, you understand what I'm saying, that we, uh, got as close to it as, as what we recommended.
That's what amped it, uh, Bill to do it, so that it wasn't like the thumbing his nose at the, at the, at the board who said, look, this is our direction. So we produced that 3%.
Right.
But here's another one, a real needs you might want to consider.
And there's num, there are several numbers that are going to change. This is just a preliminary budget. This is not the final budget.
We're still waiting for. To go to AdCom.
Right.
Nothing's being voted on. This is just the first look at the budget.
You know, I mean, we, we heard this last year when we said, no positions, no new positions. Bill came forward with the library position and said they found money somewhere else. So my thing is, we recommended 3%, Bill came in with a budget. If these positions are needed, why not go back to the department heads and say, you look at your budget now. And you see if you have savings somewhere, that can bring us in at 3%. That's, that's basically what happened last year.
You could do that. That'd be really hard, that would be really hard to do, Stephanie.
But I, and I do think that AdCom.
But I think, I think that was the direction we wanted to go in and, um.
Well, I'll say why, I'll tell you why it's, it's hard to do, because that was only a pot time position in the library. And they were able to do trim other lines in their expense lines to make that happen. That's the only reason that, that was, that could be done that way. They could not do that in, in a 3%. To get it reached at 3%, that would be very difficult for them to achieve.
And AdCom can always, like we just talked about, they can, they can cut it, but they can't add to it. So I think that we should, yeah, but let everyone look at the positions. Doesn't mean we're going to support them. We have to hear more.
Yes. In a town meeting, I, I have no problem telling who's going to vote, but even last year, to hear that a department, any department, not picking on the library by any means, that just happened to be the position. But if they could have found that money to save, they should have found that money to save. It shouldn't have been to add a position. Because they should have, you know, we were still in COVID, and to be able to find savings, you should, that should be part of, what you should be doing with your budget anyhow.
Well, now you're into a whole bigger discussion.
Oh, yeah.
About the culture of budgeting and who does what.
It's, it's, it's definitely, you know, while it'd be great to have it buttoned up, it is, you know, this is why the, this goes for months. Literally, we look at it, you know, for a couple of months. So, um, I think to avoid confusion where we are now, putting forth with the six positions so that we can trim it down, again, not, not endorsing or anything like that, but to be able to look at them with us, you know, taking a vote. I mean, we're, we're due to do it by March 28th. Maybe we could get it sooner, um, for sure. But I think we need to hear more on them.
And it's still the town manager recommended budget right now. You guys have not taken any votes. So if we do add the six positions, that's, that's his recommendation. You then get to decide what you want to do with that. And it's one book.
And again, going back to the point, Marie, is, um, we get to decide. But if we're doing it concurrently with the advisory committee, and this is the last time I'll say it, they're going to make a recommendation on something that may not materialize.
This is what your town meeting warrant looks like.
But, you know, I don't want to prolong this conversation because I was on AdCom for three years myself. And my understanding was, that's the vote that goes to the town meeting, what AdCom recommends. That's the vote that goes to town meeting.
Right.
I always thought that, and then I would get to town meeting and say, this isn't, this is different.
No, but also, how many, how many, how many times does the.
You know, the, you know, the people at the town meeting can change.
Yeah.
No, but it was different, like, what was presented to town meeting was different than what we recommended as the advisory committee.
No, I think.
You can't do that.
We can't do that.
You can't do that.
Well, I believe the advisory committee presents the budget.
Right.
They present the budget. But the only thing is, I, 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 I can only speak for my time. You might agree, you might disagree. How many times during those discussions does the selectmen, whether, they can make their own recommendation, AdCom, but how many times is there part of a discussion? Well, you know, um, the board of selectmen do recommend it.
But we are supposed to be completely independent, just like we can't tell them to televise.
Ever happening, quite frankly.
All right. Well, I, I do.
Oh, you know, what happens though is, is Bill goes to all the meetings. So he represents the selectmen. So he can weigh in one way or the other when these.
Well, that was my next thing. I think maybe as, as the advisory committee is starting, they should hear this whole, not this whole discussion, but how, how these two different budgets are going, and that we don't have time to make a recommendation before they're going to see both budgets as well. You know what I mean? So, so as long as they, they know that, because I think that's where Seth's getting, like, there's two, there's two different budgets here. And, you know, they're going to say, oh, it came from the selectmen, the selectmen recommended a budget. And even if we just go ahead and add the six positions in, that's going to weigh on them that that's what was recommended, even though they can do whatever they want to do. It still is in their mind that that's the budget that came forward from the board of selectmen. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And the only thing I, I ca, I nuance is the board, the select board, rather than recommends, we produce and deliver. Recommend is like, well, we think this is, would be good and, but we're actually delivering it to them and saying, this is what you have to work with.
I feel used to saying select board. I haven't said select board once.
Why can't we just send them the one?
That, that's, that would be my recommendation, would be to just send them the one with the six. You know, we haven't agreed, we haven't waited.
You can always decide, recommend the small number later.
Even for how much it confused honestly us tonight, I think, if you just go forward with the six. And then I think we can kind of chip away at what doesn't work, you know, by both.
But, but I mean, my point was by maybe Bill, or if you happen to be at one of them, I'm sure they would be happy to let you have a minute to say, just so you know, we're, we're sending you that one with six, but we have not had any information. We have not deliberated because now we're sending them a budget with six new positions that we don't even know if we agree on.
And I, that, that's what I mean. I think that's okay.
But that happens, this early in the process.
I think that's okay.
Oh, I don't ever remember two separate budgets ever.
No, 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 no.
We've never done it this way.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, I think they need to know that why we're sending the one with six.
I think everyone, I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that.
The only thing I would say is, they, they need, if, if it's one budget, they need two messages. Six are included, and it's still 3%.
It's not 3%.
No, 3.2.
3.2, whatever.
3.35, right.
That's the number.
Yeah.
And it's more than, than we voted. And, you know, it's still under, under review.
Okay, good. Send them the one.
Okay. All right.
Are you guys going to vote on that to say that, that you want the second one sent to the, uh?
You want, you want the one budget sent to the entire committee?
To the.
I mean, I don't know that we, I don't know that we want to take the formal vote on something we haven't even heard about, but I think we do want.
It's a suggestion from the board.
Yeah, your recommended, your recommended budget to them is that, is to, and then to begin the process of review, and the board will continue to review its position on the same thing.
Exactly, yep.
All right?
Okay. All right. Anything else on that one then? We're way behind schedule. All right. Good?
Yeah.
All right. So now we're going to go into the warrant. The warrant is to, are we closing it tonight? I thought we're. Oh, it's just a review. Okay, what's the close date that we have to?
The warrant closes automatically on the 15th.
Automatically on the 15th, okay.
You don't have to take a vote to do it.
Okay, so that, so, so because it closes tomorrow, we're looking at the table of contents, which is by design, to see what's on here. I did ask to have the citizens petitions added. I, I do feel like there are some competing priorities on the citizens petitions, particularly around sidewalks. Um, while the intent on both of them are good, um, there's, there, there are some there that, that we'll have to flush through. Um, but as far as the items that are coming from the board, I'm sure everyone's seen the table of contents. We've kind of quickly discussed some of the ones that are going on that we're sponsoring. I don't think that there's anything that we need to talk about, but I just wanted to make sure there's nothing else that has to be added. Because again, these, some stuff can come off, but there's nothing else that we want to add that's not listed here, correct?
So just, um, Leah, I just want to let you know that I, I've set up a meeting with, um, the two proponents of those, those articles, those, those citizen petition articles.
Well, there's three.
There's, there's three, but one of them is the, uh, is the, it was one of them has nothing to do with sidewalks.
Yep, right.
The other, the other one, we already didn't meet and have a conversation and actually had a presentation on it. So the, the other one, but the other two are both sending around doing sidewalk improvements, et cetera, and road improvements. And, um, I've asked for a meeting with both those proponents to go over, with the meeting with the DPW director to go through the, through those issues.
And I noticed those are not on the AdCom schedule, correct? Do those need to be built in? Uh, which understandably so because they're late breaking.
Right.
But I imagine those will be added onto the end of AdCom's schedule? Okay.
They'll have, they have, they have to look at all 30 articles.
Any, any questions? Yeah, we're at, what, 33 or 30 right now?
30, 30 articles.
So anything else that's not on here that the board feels that we need to add, or we're, we're good to let this automatically close tomorrow? Again, things can come off. We can always open it if we have to, but this is where we're at right now. And the only one that, uh, I think, yeah, I think we've kind of at some point talked about all the AdCom bylaw. I'm not sure, but maybe that's just cleanup, so. Okay. So I don't think that we need a motion for this, or, just a discussion.
This is, yeah.
Anyone have anything? Are we good?
Good.
Good? Okay. More to come on that one. All right. Next is town manager's update, and then selectmen's update. We already hit the action items.
So with respect to, um, the general update is, um, we had some, some good news on the grant front, but I'm not able to actually formally announce it yet. So I'm going to wait till, till we, we formally receive that. But we received some very good news this past week on, on a, on a grant that we didn't anticipate to get, but we're very happy to, uh, to look at and to get. The recruitment update, uh, we hired a new community response social worker. Was actually a new, a new hire, but actually an old friend, Christina LaRose, who actually worked with us in the human services department. So she's returning back from Franklin. She was, she'd gone to Franklin for about a year, um, and really enjoyed. Thank you both, by the way, for the presentation. Nice job. So, um, uh, and, um, she is returning to the, uh, to the town in the, in the role of the, of the new community, community's response social worker. Uh, and, um, and then in process are the assistant treasure collector position, which they're getting very close on. And then also in the procurement administrator and the summer recreation positions that will be, that are advertised currently. The other point, important one I wanted to talk about tonight was the transition plan for the town manager. Uh, I did speak at length with John Codere this afternoon. Um, he is in the same position I am, up to knee deep into budget stuff and developing, preparing for his town meeting in Northborough before he leaves. Um, I did talk to him about possibly trying to get a date so we could, he could come down here and start, you know, getting to know some of the people here and, and doing some preliminary discussions. He is scheduled to be here on April 10th is his first day. I've set aside two or three, actually three days to. I've set aside, uh, two or three, actually three days to meet with him and to, and do meetings with various departments, community leaders, um, et cetera, to, to actually get him indoctrinated to the, the community here, and to try and get him, uh, up to speed fairly quickly.
But that's after the 10th.
That's after the 10th, 10th, 11th, and 12th.
He's not looking to come before.
He may, he's gonna try to come here before that, he's, it's just, he's really, really up to it.
But there'll be four days of kind of this overlap transition.
Right.
Where there'll be a number of meetings, I imagine, there'll probably be time on your calendars also, like 11, 12, 13, so maybe let Katie know if there's days and times that work better, she builds out the calendars as well.
Yeah, she'll actually, uh, work with you all to try and schedule some time. I do recommend that you actually have some time to meet with him on your own, to, to one-on-one.
So, so I wasn't here when you came.
Yep.
Is four days enough of a transition?
Uh, it should be, I mean.
A new CEO coming in and.
Well, if, if he was, if he didn't have the level of experience that he, that he has, um, uh, I would say that might take a little longer, but I, I think four days is enough. I had no, no experience walking in here, so, I, so I think we're in a much better position to have a smooth transition. And, um, and quite honestly, I, I don't wanna get in the way of John's, you know, taking over. I mean, I think it's, uh, we talked about that today, and he thought that, that was, that was fine with him in terms of doing that, but he said, you know, I just hope that you remain available to me when, when I need you. I said, absolutely, that's not an issue with me. I said, I would be absolut- absolutely happy to do it, I mean, I've known John a long time, so I'm happy to help him any way I can.
And we talked about, like, everything from department head meetings, to how we work with the board, to like, literally, police chief driving around town, like, here's, you know, dump road, or, you know, whatever these kind of knowledges you just need to learn. So we kinda went over, like, a pretty good schedule that, not in depth, but like, themes that I think we all felt comfortable with.
And, and it, as it turns out, that, that's a week where we have a department head meeting. So I'll actually have him come to that meeting, and then, uh, he'll actually see how we normally operate, um, which will be good, I think, for him to see, um, how, how the culture is here.
When, when's our board of directors?
Yep, your selectmen's meeting is on the 11th.
The 11th, okay.
So, so, and, and for that meeting, I intend to just basically introduce John to you all, and then, um, and then I'm gonna step aside and let him control the meeting, because it's, at that point, it's really his meeting to run, uh, not mine, so I, I.
It's our meeting to run.
I stand corrected, thank you for, thank you for doing that. But, uh, but I just wanted to say, you know, um, I don't, I, the last thing I wanna do is get in, get in his way, because it's just, you know, it's uncomfortable for both of us if, if that were the case, so I think we're gonna try and avoid that as much as possible. But it should be a pretty good, it's a pretty smooth transition for him. You know, uh, I feel badly for him in some ways, because he's not gonna have any downtime from his, going from his transition from next job, his last job to this job, so at some point we wanna think about how, maybe give him some relief in that area, but... Um, not with me, by the way, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be enjoying my life at that point, um, so. Uh, and so that's really it. I think we've, uh, we've really tried to spend a lot of time focusing on that, and getting everything cleaned up before he gets here. There are some, um, organizational issues that we're, we're gonna continue to deal with, but by and large, a lot of the major concerns and major issues have in fact been dealt with prior to him getting here, and he's not in the middle of a collective bargaining season, he's not in the middle of, uh, he'll, the budget process will be essentially done uh, at that point, and, um, and town meeting will be in the throes of, of final, final recommendations at that point. So, um, he'll be there for the town meeting, I won't be my, I won't be here anymore at that point, but, um, I think it should be pretty smooth, right?
Quick, quick point, um, so Bill, appreciate you reaching out to the business owner on Moore Street who was having the power outage issues, I just wanted to make sure that we're, that's still on our radar.
So I can give you an update on that, so, uh, I actually, I turned that over to Chief Kelleher, who has the direct relationship with, um, with, uh, National Grid, and they set up a meeting, so they're actually meeting this Friday to meet with National Grid and their representative. So, um, so the, the business owner is actually pretty pleased with the, with the service he's been getting from the town. And so we're, uh, hopeful that we'll be able to help him get some, get some answers. They're even looking at, at the possibility of, if there is a way to bridge between, uh, National Grid and Mansfield Power, because they're so close to the line whether that can be done. I'm not sure it can be done legally, but, um, but given the fact that they're so close, maybe there's a way to do it.
And I don't know if it's appropriate too, but Chris does have a couple of applications to get lights on the poles in the veterans lot too. They've been in for a couple of months, so if we have years, if you can help escalate that anyway, it's possible as well.
And actually, the, the, if it, I don't know, there may be a National Grid component to that, but.
There is, I talked to Chris, and we meet out in that parking lot, probably feel like once every, once a week.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, he's had the application in for a couple of months, and, um, they can't connect it into the pole without National Grid, so it's, it's out there. Um, anything else for you?
That's it, that's it for me.
Okay, um, so I'll kinda skip to the central street lot, since we're talking about that. So, you know, we've had a number of meetings, I know Bill's got another meeting out there next Tuesday in the central street lot with someone out there, but again, we're trying to work really hard about parking, and dumpsters, and deliveries, and all that, so the letters did go out, letting everyone know, kinda level-setting what came out of that meeting that we did he, hold here in the gala meeting room. Um, there was some feedback from a building owner, Bill's gonna help work through that. I'm gonna try to go, I am off of work next week, so depending, depending on what I'm doing with the kids, I just can't be, be tied necessarily to, I'm gonna try to get there, but we'll see what happens with the kids. Um, so those letters did go out, there's a copy of it there for everyone, and they're just kind of the advisory committee schedule that we talked about, those meetings do start up Wednesday. Um, look for those, they're posted. Um, Christina, you've posted, have you posted for us?
I did not for this one, but I will.
Okay, just, let's just post them all. Um, so do we think, do we think we're gonna have a quorum there tomorrow? I mean, we're just attending, I guess, we can just listen. Um, but we'll just have to be mindful of that for this week, okay? Um, and then the Marilyn Robin Center did ask us for a letter of support from the board, um, which Christina helped us draft, this is a beautiful letter that she helped us draft there, that we did just send in there applying for a grant, and, uh, we're looking for letters of support from the community as well, so just kind of an FYI on that one.
Cool. So just, there was one other, two, uh, two or three other things I just, and Katie was still up, uh, watching this, and she reminded me. So, uh, we, we, I did approve the use of the, of town property for the Foxborough JC's Easter egg hunt on April 1st. I also created, I also approved the, the Foxborough JC's Spring Craft Vendor Fair on May 20th, and the Boyd Library Bollywood Style Fitness Class on May 22nd.
May 20th is a Taylor Swift concert. Do we want to have something on the common? We would always stay away from a game day for something like that.